Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the Foxborough School Committee meeting to order. It being April 7th, 2014, 7 o'clock. The agenda is as follows for this evening. 7 o'clock visitors, 7:10 approval of minutes, 7:15 teaching and learning highlights, FHS French Exchange Program. Ms. Fraser. 7:35 coordinated program review update. Dr. Burdos. 7:50 special education programs update. 8:10 bi-county collaborative quarterly update. Ms. Pennelli. 8:20 school committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual. 8:30 school committee vote on school choice participation. Ms. Pennelli. 8:40 FY14 budget update. Mr. Bill Yucna. 8:45 other matters. We will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategies with non-union personnel, superintendent's contract. The committee will not return to open session. We're going to start first with visitors. Are there any visitors that wish to be recognized? Okay.
Not yet. One minute, not yet. One minute.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
One minute.
Okay, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. We're approving our regular meeting minutes dated March 17th.
Just while you're looking at the minutes, it's confusing to our guests because it says visitors and they are visitors.
Right.
But that's not, you have your own portion of the meeting. So, your own part of the meeting.
Thank you. Do, are there any revisions to the March 17th regular meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0, thank you. Okay, and now we are going to move on to teaching and learning highlights. Yes.
Bienvenue à la Italie. To our friends from France. So, this is about our French Exchange Program and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to welcome them because while we often have a reception, they don't usually arrive on a week when we're having a school committee night. So, it's a really public opportunity for us to learn a little bit about the French Exchange Program and the wonderful opportunities it gives both our students and our wonderful friends from France. So, I'm going to introduce Ms. Karen Fraser, who we all know as our World Language Department Head, and she'll give you a little bit of background about it, so, welcome. Bienvenue.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks so much for having us tonight. The French Exchange Program has been running for over 30 years now, I think, and it's been a very-
1982.
1982. So, um, it's been a very successful program. Our students typically travel to France over February vacation and stay in the homes of students in L'Angeot, France. And then we reciprocate, usually in the fall, actually, but this year we got to do it a little bit later, so our students had already been there, and now they're hosting on this end, and I'll let you hear from them, but I think the impact that it's had on so many of our students has just been indescribable, really. They've really gained a lot from the experience, so I'll let them talk to you and answer any questions you have, but thank you so much for your support of the program, we appreciate it.
Could you introduce the two chaperones?
Yes. So, we have two teachers who have accompanied them. Our French colleagues. We have Veronique and Karim, who are here accompanying their students as well, so.
And they're both return visitor, they're return friends, I would say.
Yes.
Because I've met both of them in the past, so, welcome again. So, any of the students who want to speak about it, if they could just bring their chair up to where you are, and then, we'd love to hear from them.
Just say, do you want to say something?
Bring the chair. Bring the chair.
Yes.
He can grab that chair right up to the front.
Any chair at all?
It's an honor to be here, and this is a great opportunity for us to be here. This was a warm, warm welcome, and, yeah, so far it's been great in the families. Our correspondents are super nice, and when they came to France, it was really cool because we got to get to know them, and, yep.
Yeah, it was a great opportunity for us to discover new culture and to have this open, yeah, to share with them and to, to, to present France, to represent France, I mean, so, I think it's really a good, a good exchange, a good kind of exchange.
I wish I spoke French half as well as you speak English. Just half. I don't speak it very well, but it's my favorite language, and my favorite place in the world, actually. So, you're, it's amazing how well, you know, how well you all speak. I'm amazed that every year when you come- That was a perfect answer. Perfect.
French diplomacy rides again.
And I know it's very near and dear to the heart of Ms. Beverly Lord here because she was originally part of that when she was a teacher here, that she went all the time, so it's, it's near and dear to her heart, and part of the reason that you're here tonight, obviously.
Well, thank you.
Because it's something that we love to talk about. So, what's, what's been the most surprising thing so far?
Well, everything's bigger here. The dimensions and the stadium, for example, yeah, it's really big here.
And the life inside the school is more, hmm, free. It's more relaxed, but not too much than in France. I'm, yeah. It's a good condition to work, I think.
Yep.
I'm wondering if one of, and I don't know whether you want to speak about what you've been doing while you've been here, or whether we want to have some of the students, your French students, that would like to come up and also speak about what they've been showing our visitors while they've been here. Right?
Hi, everyone.
So- Please say your name.
My name is Emma Perinos.
And, and your, what grade you're in?
I'm a senior. And Justine is staying at my house, and I met her in February. She showed me around Paris, and I got to know her very well, and I was so excited for her to come back here again. And yesterday, I took her to Patriots Place, and we showed, I showed her the stadium because they don't, obviously, they don't have American football over there. And, um, she took a lot of pictures, and she said, "Oh, look," like, all the big cars and everything, like, yeah, she was in awe, and we walked, we went through a lot of stores, and then after she, after we left, we went to Castle Island, South Boston.
Did you go to Sullivan's, get a hot dog?
We, it, there was a long line outside, so we didn't meet there, but it was a, no, but it was a very nice day, and I thought that they could see something old because here we don't have a lot of those types of things in our area, like, when I went to France, I saw a lot of chateaus and older monuments, so, I thought I could.
Did you also tell her, though, they not only play football there, they also play soccer? The New England Revolution?
Yeah, we know.
Okay.
What was something you saw in France that you particularly liked, or did?
Everything was amazing, but I really loved their cathedrals, Notre Dame and Saarke, and all the chateaus were beautiful. It's, it's so breathtaking, and if I could, like, go back there again, I really, like, I would love to, in a heartbeat. It was, it was unforgettable experience there.
Would you like to state your name? I know who you are, but can we move the microphone so Brooke can talk too?
Hi, my name's Brooke Dudek, and I actually, I was a part of the French Exchange Program two years ago. This year I went on the Spanish Exchange, so I'm not really sure what to mention here. All I know is that when I, you know, any opportunity to travel is absolutely incredible because, you know, it's something that shows you a completely different way of life, and I just, yeah, I couldn't get enough of it going to France, so I went to Spain, and it was, yes. Yeah, I would say unforgettable. The bonds that you form with these people, you know, you only know them for 10 days, but you form these incredibly strong bonds.
Isn't it amazing? 10 days there, 10 days here, and you have a friend for life.
For life, yeah.
Have you maintained contact? Like, when you went last year, did you, did you-
Well, when I went in February-
I mean, February.
Yeah, leading up to, um, leading up to the day when I went to France, I found, as you seen on Facebook, and, you know, messaging back and forth, talking about plans and likes and dislikes, and she and I have a lot in common. Yeah, but like, even after I left, like, we still talked a lot, and I talked to my other, because I have another girl staying at my house, I, and I talked to her too through email, and, um, yeah, but like, just like being able, like, just communicating a lot is, like, definitely keeps the friendship strong.
It's a great program.
Great program. Your name is Justine? That's my daughter's name.
Does the committee have other questions that they'd like to ask our students, or? No, please.
Mrs. Grant here as well, who's one of the chaperones for the French Exchange and has worked incredibly hard to provide this experience to students. She can talk a little bit about what the students did in class today.
Yes, well, we had a great day. We were, I was fortunate enough to have French students in all of my classes today. So, what they did is, is the American students had prepared questions ahead of time in French that they asked the French students, and they responded in English. And what was, what I enjoyed was that they got through the questions they'd written and then came up with more on, on their own without working on it before that. And I would like to thank the school committee for their support, and Ms. Fraser, who has been incredibly supportive and helpful. And, and just in, just to be able to provide this experience to me is invaluable, what they learned. I can, I can teach them, I can show them videos. It's nothing like living in someone's home and really experiencing it. And I've been fortunate myself to be able to experience it that way. I had never, and I, our friends, our French friends, I get to stay with them and have a wonderful time. They treat me very well, and-
I bet they do.
It's new, now it's family over there.
And I found out my French improved when I was over there. Because it's one, because like being, because I mean, we don't naturally have a French, like, the right French accent, like, it's hard to speak in French, and it's a hard language, and like, their accent's much different from ours, so like, going over there and just, like, you have to just jump right into it and just, like, let it just come to you, and I, like, and like, I spoke almost entirely in French the whole time there. Like, there were some words that I didn't know, but I asked, and like, everyone helped me a lot, and, but like, coming back, like, I definitely improved in French, like, speaking and listening wise, so.
I think what helps with that is that the program is, what I really love about it, is that you stay with these families. It's not like you're staying in a hotel. You get to stay with them and experience, you know, life as a French person or as a Spanish, yeah, which is-
That's definitely a whole different kind of experience than just going and staying in a hotel and seeing the sights, and that's awesome. Bruce?
I'm sorry if you said this already. How many French students are here currently?
They didn't say.
Eighteen.
Fifteen, fifteen of our students went to France.
And how long are they here until? April 15th.
So, how many days?
Ten days.
Ten days, okay.
And, um, for, for the rest of their stay, that today, they, well, they were with families yesterday. Today they followed, their students came to the reception, they're here for World Language and Culture Night tonight. Tomorrow they're going to the Kennedy Library and to Harvard University. Wednesday they're going to New York City. Thursday they're going to Salem, to the Salem Witch Museum, the House of Seven Gables, and on the Historical Walk. That's Friday, that's Thursday. Friday, they're going to Plymouth Plantation. They'll be with the families on the weekend again. Monday they're going to do the Freedom Trail in Boston. And Tuesday they'll be shadowing students again here, and they will have a tour of the police and fire stations on their way back.
It's a whirlwind itinerary, right?
And, yeah, their goodbye potluck supper is next Monday night.
Yes, and we certainly be thrilled to have any of you who'd like to come. It's at 6 o'clock in the, in the cafeteria.
Mrs. Lord, is it très fatiguer?
Très fatiguer mais pas trop.
No, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I was trying to look good, I didn't get that.
Translation, please!
Very tiring, but not too tiring.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Ça vaut le coup. It's worth it.
Agree. So, we hold, have a whole party for you. We have a whole party for you tonight.
And before you leave, we want to thank the Foreign Language Department for supporting these two programs because it's a lot of your own time that is extra, and we really, really appreciate it. Well, it's going to lead to more diplomatic, wonderful things, understanding, sharing, and kudos for your first ever excessively successful already culture night. I mean, I, to have the success tonight on the first one, it usually takes at least two to three years. I mean, I'm, I'm bowled over, I think it's wonderful. And before you leave the room, I don't know if the camera, could you come up and stand? I would love for you to show the back of the T-shirt, Karen.
If you, he might grab you, if you turn around right there, he might be able to grab you. Because there's another camera up here. There you go, keep turning.
All right. Whoa, 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 stop.
Turn a little more.
All right, stop, all right.
Everyone smiles in the same language.
I love it, that's awesome. Isn't that excellent?
Can you say that in French?
Ah, tout le monde sourit dans la même langue.
Sounds so much nicer in French.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming and, and sharing with us. This is so amazing to see, you know, we talk about it, we approve these trips for our students to go on, and we hear about, but to actually see all of you come here and hear all the positive experiences that our students have and all of you have, that's, I mean, I think this is, this is in real time, it's so meaningful.
It enriches their education in a way that we could never provide.
Oh, absolutely.
We just could never provide it.
Well, and the world that our kids are going to go into is going to be so increasingly global. So, Ms. Fraser, a little homework assignment for you. You need to come back to us, and thinking about the global world our kids are going to graduate into, we need to know what you need for next year's edition of this event.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate that.
And just so people, if people watching at home, World Language and Culture Night is going on still in the cafeteria, it is absolutely standing room only, it is packed. What an unbelievable turnout, and so many booths and so many cultures represented, it's just, you hit it out of the park, really, on the first time.
There were 150 crepes and they were all gone in 20 minutes.
How many, oh, no.
I want to ask the, the French students what they thought of them. Were they, oh, did you taste them? The crepes?
There's nothing like a crepe in France.
I know, I know, I know.
He's being polite.
He's very diplomatic.
Thumbs up in the back.
It was good?
They were actually authentic, they were made by people from France.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one of the people at the table is from France, because I'm, her daughter is my best friend, she's French, the mother there.
Okay, awesome.
Wonderful. That, that explains it.
It's the real deal.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Have a great-
Thank you so much, enjoy your, enjoy, enjoy your time here. Take everything in, which I know you all will do, so.
Au revoir.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Enjoy your week, your 10 days.
Guys, as Brooke said, I like French, I like French exchange so much, I had to go on Spanish exchange.
I know.
I guess that, that makes a lot of sense.
The enthusiasm, it's just so exciting to see. I just, I'm so excited for our students, for these students, the bonds that they're forming, um, I, you know, I mean, I talk to people now as adults, and they talk about when they went, and it's just something they never, a student never forgets.
Right.
I'm just so glad we have this program, and thank you to Ms. Lord.
Yes.
Too, right?
It's just wonderful that it continues to be supported, because without that, the opportunity wouldn't be there. And it's, it's so authentic and-
And many, you know, many now, with the people who originally started them, of course, they retired. Many of the schools have dropped us. And it caught, people have been hired who caught the dream and kept it alive here. We're very lucky.
Well, I'm glad. I'm glad you all did.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're ahead of schedule, so we're going to keep moving. Coordinated program review update. Dr. Burros.
All right, so coordinated program review is part of compliance monitoring from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It happens every six years, and in between that, we have a three-year mid-cycle for special education. And what this entails is to begin with a self-assessment process in the area of civil rights in special education, and it, and has us go through all of our policies and procedures related to civil rights and special ed and any other regulatory requirements from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And after we spend a lot of time looking through all those policies and procedures and seeing where are we, we have to take that information, and it's different this time, it's the first time for myself as well as Foxborough, that it's all web-based monitoring, and so we have to take everything and upload it into a particular portal. So, for example, for civil rights, we have over 26 criteria, and that's multiple things that we upload to meet the requirements, to show, for example, our code of conduct and our handbooks and what we do with teachers and what we do with students, we're meeting all of the regulations and that training and confidentiality, those kinds of things. And then we have to show proof of all of those documents, policies that you approved, we have to take those policies and make sure that they meet the requirements, regulations, and upload those as well. In special education, there's more than 56, I think, criteria. Dr. Einzel can talk to that in a second. So, we go through this very lengthy self-assessment process and really look at, you know, how are we doing? And at the same time, we look back from the mid-cycle, and we look back six years ago to see if we were cited on any of these criteria. We either find that we are commendable in any of these areas, which we have been in some in the past, and that's difficult to achieve, that we've fully implemented what is expected, or if we've partially implemented, and then if we've not implemented, we have a corrective action plan that we have to put into place and say how we're going to fix what is not in compliance. And then we have a duration of, to get that into compliance. So, that is all before May the 15th of this year. Then we will expect visits from the Department of Ed, and sometime next year, we don't know exactly when that will take place, but depending on the size of your school district, two to eight members from the department come. They look at the documents, they look at things that you've uploaded, in addition to that, many other documents to make sure that what you have actually uploaded are what you have in practice. They will then do a round of multiple interviews, they will do observations to really triangulate their data to see that we are in compliance with not just civil rights and special education, but then all of our other programs come into play. The English Language Learner Program and all of the criteria that follow along with English language education, and then in addition to that, Title I, which is for providing services at need, for most in need and reading, and at this time we have Title I for the Agro-Elementary School. So, there's a lot of information that they look at, it really is a lot of work on staff here to put that information together and to really look to see that we're meeting the requirements, and if we're not, why not, and to put into place whatever corrective things that we need to put into place. In addition to the site visits afterwards, they will provide us with a full report, and we have amount of time to respond to that, and then it will become kind of final at that point, and if we have actions that we need to meet, then we'll have to get to work on those things. But the special education part of it, civil rights, to go to that for a minute, those are things like policies that make sure of equity and that we're looking at comparability. In special education, it's, it's really taking student records of whether their initial or reevaluations or annual reviews and pulling all of these files to make sure all of the procedures that are in place are carried out. So, I don't know, Dr. Einzel, if you wanted to add anything as far as the special education piece?
Just while she's getting ready, our purpose tonight is to let you, just to give you a heads up that this is, this process has begun, even though it's for next year, not to necessarily provide you with all the details of all the criteria and what that means and, and all of that. So, it's to give you an overview, so you have a little bit of heads up this spring, and then we'll come back in the fall with a very detailed overview of the process and the timelines, because there are many interviews that occur as part of that.
So, the self-assessment is completed and submitted by May 15th?
Correct.
So, has this been a process that you've already been working on and, and preparing for?
Yes, so for, just to give kind of a concrete example, one of the things is we have to make sure that we have time on learning at the elementary level versus at the secondary level, 900 hours of instruction versus 990 hours of instruction at the high school. And we have to back out any early release days, we have to back out lunch and recess, and then we have different forms that every principal has to calculate that time, they have to sign off, and then we have to upload one of those for every school, and that's just one part of one criteria.
Right. So, it's a lot of document preparation.
Right.
And so that we can see, so you get to see for yourself as you're preparing the documentation that you need, what areas you think in your own mind are-
Could be, potentially be deficient in.
Could potentially not meet the criteria. So, that's, that's what the self-assessment is involved. It doesn't involve us collecting data, at this point it's providing documentation of what procedures we have in place and how the district is in compliance with a large variety of, of rules and regulations and state and federal law.
What's the usual timeframe that it, that it will probably be for you to kind of submit your cap after, after the, after they come and they prove, they review?
For this, this time right now for the self-assessment?
Well, no, you're going to submit that, right? And then you're going to get information back once, after they come and they do the site visit, you're looking. What's the timeframe after they submit the, the actual report that you have to correct those?
Oh, it depends. It depends on what the criteria was. We submit a corrective action report within a few months. And then it depends on what it was that was partially implemented and unimplemented, it might be something they require us to correct immediately, it might be something that we could have a longer-term plan.
So, all specific then to the particular criteria?
Yes, and then special education in particular, they come back in two, usually two to three years and look exactly at what progress you've made, so they don't let the whole time go by. And most of the other criteria, having been through it three times myself in two districts, most of the criteria, if you submit a plan on your corrective action, and then when you submit what's called a mid-cycle progress report, if you can show that you've already corrected them, then they will, then submit a mid-cycle report that lifts that if you've corrected it. So, it depends.
Okay. Just trying to get an overview of the process, did you want to?
I was just going to add that in special education, we're doing a self-assessment at each level, so the preschool, the elementary, middle school, and high school, we're meeting as a faculty for about a two-hour block and going through the special ed criteria to figure out where, where we think we are in terms of meeting the regulations. So, it's, it's, are we, are we holding the team meetings on appropriate timeline? Are we making sure that the parents are informed and they're participating in the meetings? Are we doing child fines? So, there, it's really regulation-specific, but we really are having the, the faculty really participate in it, so they understand why it's so important that we need to follow the regulations, cross our i's, t's and dot our i's. So, that's been really good. We've had preschool, elementary was today, and we did the high school last week, and then, so we just have the middle school to go, and it's going quite well. The other thing that we're doing, we have about 31 student records that we're reviewing, and again, they're looking at the annual meetings, they reevals, they initial evals, parent participation, making sure that the, the timelines are met, and I think so far we look pretty good, so that's really encouraging, so.
I can see the need to do it from an audit perspective or an operational perspective, but I was waiting to hear the value, and it sounded like Dr. Einzel maybe alluded to a little bit when you said it helps reinforce with the staff why some of the regulations are important. So, is that one of the things that makes this?
I would say yes. I don't think upfront, we think, you know, that's not our first thought, is like, let's get a lot of value out of this, because it's so much work that you're, you're basically just trying to start preparing. But I would say yes, that it's, it's a good time, especially for special education, so it's a good time for, when the staff engages in that activity that Dr. Einzel's leading with them, it's a reminder of what the regulations are and why we follow them and why it's important for families and for students. And then, it's not enough, though, what we do, because when they come back, they'll look at the actual records, usually they look at quite a few, and they'll interview staff, so if there's a discrepancy between what we said happens, what staff are saying their understanding is, and what the records say actually happened, then if any one of those three data points are off, then that's something they look at. We did actually pretty well last time, we only had two areas in special education that needed addressing, which I think this, at the time, there was 48 maybe. needed addressing, which I think this, at the time, there was 48 maybe different criteria, so that was, that was, we went quite well. And for us, it's more, I would say, when I say us, the central office functions that are reviewed, like Title I, English Learn Education, Civil Rights, Career Vocational Technical Education. For us, it's a lot of, I guess, understanding of what we have in place. So it's more administrative functioning, do we have the right things in place? Is our language correct in policies and procedures in the handbook? Is there any way we need to improve that if the law has changed? So for us, it's a review of the procedures that we have in place and how we go about our business. So do we have somebody in a handbook that says, if you feel that you were harassed, who do you report it to? Do we have all of those, those structures outlined versus special education? And English Learn Education, they look at student records as well. Special education is very driven by student records. So it, the different areas-
That just sounds, sounds so procedural. Do they offer you any best practice when they come back or anything like that?
Yes, sometimes.
They could, but-
Be nice if they did, right? Yeah.
I think more than anything, if you see those commendables every once in a while-
Yes.
And just having them just reiterate the things that we know that are really good in place, and to have someone else from the outside to come in and to say the same thing. I mean, at least that, that's a little kind of kudos, but, because we have hard-working people, and we work really hard to make sure that things are structurally and procedurally in place.
Sure.
This is the, this is the procedure by which it, they enlightened us that we weren't offering physical education every year of schooling. This is, that's one of the, the laws that they ask us to provide documentation that that's in place. So this is, this is the procedure we were referencing, where we had to file a corrective action report, which was to hand-count what activities kids were in. So that was our corrective action. It wasn't considered a, a structure that was in compliance with the law, it was just our corrective action method.
So, I mean, it's basically a, a method to provide oversight that we are complying with what the law basically says.
That's right.
Exactly.
And so it's, you know, hospitals have that and, you know, schools have it, and it also, I'm sure, would help drive certain districts that might not be allocating maybe funds in certain areas that they need to do that.
Yes.
So for us, it sounds like we, you know, there's, like you said, you just brought up one example of one area, but I'm sure maybe for other districts, you know, it might be different too, so. It's, but it sounds like a lot of work. Appreciate everything that you are all doing to ensure that we are compliant, and I guess we'll have to wait and see, right, what the, what the results bring.
We have our deadline. We, we've provided ourselves a deadline to have everything completed before April vacation, even though it's not due until May 15. We'll see how we do.
We do have a good vacation that way.
Yeah, that's, that's the idea.
Yeah.
Right?
I think one thing to remember, like, and I said this to Amy, you know, the goal of this self-assessment stage that we're in isn't perfection. It's to really enlighten where, you know, where areas that might need more of our attention in terms of being compliant. So perfection's good, but it's not the goal of the self-assessment.
Sure.
Is this kind of a segue into our next agenda item, when we talk about special education programs update? I don't know if we're, we're done with this agenda.
We are.
Okay.
Just to make the committee aware that this has begun and what is involved.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bruce, for that overview.
I'm always available for consultation, but this is the first time I can say I'm not the one responsible for doing all of the document collection. I'm not disappointed. So, well, we thought we would put the coordinated program review overview on the same night as Dr. Einzel is going to be with us for her very first special education update as our new Director of Special Education this school year, so welcome, Sandra.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Since January, when I arrived, I, I've continued a lot of the work that Kathy McCardle, who was the interim special ed director before I arrived, did with the elementary principals and Suzanne Savansky, the team chair at the elementary level. And this was really to review each of the programs we have at the elementary level. And those are the Alternative Learning Program, the Language-Based Programming, a new program that we'll be discussing, and the Team-Based Program. The Alternative Learning Program is a program that serves students that are diagnosed with autism or have characteristics of autism. And so we reviewed the student profiles that are, of the students currently in the program, and that's students that are coming up through the system. And at this point in time, we're not changing the program at all. It will continue to be housed at IGO school, and IGO and its existing resources will be supporting it. And we're going to be reviewing the current curriculum and looking at technology use for this program, because we have some students that really will be needing technology for augmented communication or alternative ways of communicating, as well as looking at academics. The second program, which is the Learning-Based Programming, and this was a little more intense because we looked at not only the students in the program, their profiles at the current district program, which is housed at the Taylor, but also the students with this kind of diagnosis throughout the elementary buildings that are in inclusive models, meaning that they are kind of pushed in, they are pulled out for certain things, but they attend their neighborhood schools. And what we found was that most of the students with this diagnosis are served in their community schools or their neighborhood schools and not served in the district program. So next year, we're serving all these students with this kind of diagnosis or this, these kind of disabilities in their neighborhood schools. And, and at this point in time, I think that people are pretty comfortable with that. So we continued with this conversation of looking at students at the elementary level, their profiles. And what came about was that the, there was a cohort of students with pretty significant challenges, cognitive and in the areas primarily of language, communication, social pragmatics, math, and ELA. And we decided at that point in time to pull this cohort together and provide them with a program that's specifically designed for them. And that would include a teacher with a licensure of severe special needs would be preferred, but we're really looking for the best fit or the best teacher to, to, to work with these students. We plan on this program being housed at IGO Elementary, and the reason for this is IGO has a OTPT motor room that these students can access, as well as they have a really great speech and language, not that we have great speech and language people throughout the system, but the person that is currently at IGO is really, has a expertise in assistive technology and particularly working with students that need augmented communication. So we really felt that was a good fit. This will be a cost-neutral program. I just want you to know this, because it's not that the special ed population has increased or decreased, but the students' needs have shifted, and they really require the specific design of a program. So given this new program, we move on to the Team-Based Program. And this program serves students with social, emotional, and behavioral concerns. It's currently housed at IGO Elementary. It is being relocated to the Taylor School. And the reason for its relocation is that really, not only do we at Foxborough believe that there should be a program for students with, for special education students in each of the buildings, but the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education really frowns on having one school being the special ed school. So this would give each of the elementary, elementary buildings a special ed program. Again, the, the Taylor School will be supporting this program, just as IGO did. Okay. Now, as we've changed things in the first students in their programming, we have made sure that we sit down with the parents and the staff that are affected by, by these changes, both of the relocation and the development of the new program, and had, have conversation. And most of these conversations have already taken place. And the parents have been good about this and understanding if they're being relocated, why they're being relocated. For example, when we explained that for the language-based programming, the reason that it's going to be in neighborhood schools, that most, half of the students are already going up to the Ahearn next year and to their language-based program, and that the rest of the students that are remaining are really Taylor students anyway. So there really, isn't it really a relocation, any, or any issue there, other than that it's just going to be for neighborhood schools. So the thing that we currently are doing, when we are talking to the parents and the staff, is that we're going to be developing a transition plans for the students, and we'll be implementing those in, in June, making sure that it's a nice seamless change for either coming into a program or the program being relocated to a different building.
Can we just pause for a minute to allow the committee to ask questions about the-
No, I have a question. I'm, I'm a little confused. Okay. Team-based, you said, is currently housed at the IGO.
Yes.
Then you say it's relocating to the Taylor.
Right.
And then you say, resources at Taylor will continue to support the program as at IGO.
Right.
So, but then you said, so is it still at the IGO and at the Taylor?
Well, we're talking about three different programs.
The team-based one?
The team-based program, which predominantly is for children with behavioral-
Right.
Challenges, emotional dysregulation. That program, which is currently at the IGO, is going to shift to the Taylor because we need the new program to have the space at the IGO where they also have access to the therapeutic spaces in the large motor room.
Okay. I think it's just a little deceiving when it says, resources at Taylor will continue to support the program as at IGO, because it's not going to be at the IGO.
Right. But I guess what is-
Oh, right, right.
In other words, the way we supported the, with the resources at the IGO, the same thing should be expected by parents and students and staff in those programs. The same level of support, if I could say it differently, the same level of support that they had at IGO will be present at Taylor.
So that means that if a child who is at the IGO area is going to be going, that means-
Well, right now, it is a district magnet program, if you will. And so the kids in that program will relocate to Taylor.
Right.
Yes. There are few. Not a large program.
Okay. Is that the way most communities do this?
Yes.
Is that they house them at-
Yes, because there's-
Not housed, but they, you know, the resources are at one specific elementary school versus another?
Well, at one of the schools, because we don't have enough of a population to have that same program replicated three times, staff.
Okay.
So it's for efficiency of staffing and expertise, actually.
Right.
So that a group of teachers can become an expert on what it takes to have students with that disability successful, and we provide all of our resources in an intense way in one location. So that's true, that's why the preschool's in one building and not three. That's why the, the only program that we are changing our mind about that is the language-based program. And we have had a district-wide magnet, if you will, but we, we spent a lot of time studying that, and now we have the opinions of Dr. Grubert, Dr. McCardle, and now Dr. Einzel, and all of us together saying, you know, that, that, that diagnosis is present across all three schools, and we probably can provide those resources. So we always want kids to stay in their home school if we can.
Yeah, right.
So it's been, it's been done that way for quite a number of years, and it's an opportunity for us to rethink that particular type of service and whether we can, we can provide that. Now, the new program that doesn't have a name, you know, is, is really for a cohort of students that, we haven't had a cluster of students like that, so we haven't had to provide that program, but now we do, because the, while, as Sandra said, while the enrollment in special education is fairly stable, that the types of groupings or the needs of children have shifted. So we're actually taking a position that we don't need to provide a magnet and reallocating it to the students who now are in a cluster without a program.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Bruce, did you have a question?
I was just gonna ask, Sandra, what are the issues that our parents typically are most interested in when we have changes like this? Would it be the staffing that their child will interface with, is it transportation?
Actually, it's just making sure that it's seamless. You know, how are they, how are we going to do this? What's the plan? We had both principals at the, like, for those that are relocating to Taylor, we had Pete Regan there, as well as Mike Stanton there, Suzanne was there, I was there, in terms of talking to them about what was happening and why it was happening. And they were very, they understood why it was doing it, they wanted help in trying to explain it to their children, and we said that we were definitely going to be helping them doing that, because this is a team effort. And the, the parents that, of students that are in this cohort were actually very surprised and relieved that we were really looking at their specific needs and how to best provide for those needs. And I would say that they were really happy and they, whatever you want us to do, let us know. So again, we said that we were going to develop a, a plan, a transition plan, make sure that the, the students that weren't already in the building could come and visit, as well as the other students that would be relocating to Taylor. So there'll be visit days, and we'll be really walking the parents through it, because we have to really work closely with them so that there is no anxiety with them or, or their children.
So just to play that back, make sure I heard it right. So if you show them that it's seamless, and if you show them the benefit of the service as designed, then typically the logistical issues or any other concerns tend to go away?
Well, we've worked out any logistical problems, so, yes, that's true.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Steve, go ahead.
My apologies in advance for my confusion, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you again. My question about this slide under new program with the, the teacher with severe special education licensure. I think everybody sort of got like goody chills when they heard the word class neutral and, but I'm going to ask, do you have the tools that you need to best serve the students? Not doubting your expertise, but if, if we need to have a best-in-class certification or licensed expert, subject matter expert, is that a, and here's where I'm confused, is that a presently staffed position in our district or somebody that we-
We don't really-
We job in as necessary, or how does it work? Or is it regionalized, or I, I'm blind.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Sorry.
No, no, it's not a problem. I, I would say, Sandra and I talked about this again today, it could, it could be a teacher who holds a severe special needs license or moderate special needs license, kind of in-between. So we're, as Sandra said, we're going to look for the best person. We don't really speak, we speak about the needs of the program and the expertise that the teacher must have. We don't speak about people, whether they're working here now or whether it would be somebody new, because it's a little, little bit early for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We're structuring the program to meet the students' needs, and then we will go down the line of finding the right person.
Yeah, the spirit of the question was, do you have in your toolbox what you need?
Oh, yeah. That's, we like that part of the question.
Yes, yes. We do know what we need, and now we're just going to have to go out and find it.
Great. Thank you.
But I want to follow up. I, I know what you mean now. So you're saying, does she have all the resources that she needs to construct this new program?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I was, you know, focusing in on this licensure, because I'm probably butchering the word licensure. But if, if somebody needs training or to, to go up one level from where they are in our existing staff, that's what I was getting at, in case we needed-
It's just a particular license. It's not necessarily, you know, the skill set, I think, we know. It's just, we can probably have some flexibility in choosing the license.
Okay.
So for example, you know, there are different types of science licenses, there are different types of map, you know, licenses in different levels. So we'll know a little bit more, you know, in a short period. But the license of the teacher is certainly something that we pursue, and it's not, it's not that, it's not necessarily related to providing for the rest of the, of the program.
Okay.
We do have some flexibility there with the license, but what we're trying to signal with you here is the needs of the population that is unique and, and has arrived, if you will. They're, they're all quite young at this point, to sort of differentiate between other programs you might be more familiar with, because this one doesn't exist yet at the elementary level.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be quiet.
Oh. Okay, you have another slide, right?
So I left you with a thought from Thomas Hare, and he was, he's a professor over at Harvard University. And he was the special ed, he actually taught at Keefe Tech a special ed class many years ago, but he was also the special ed director in Boston and Chicago. And then he worked under Clinton in the, in the administration there at the federal level in terms of special education. And this is a quote from him in the book, and I really believe it, and I, I see it already in Foxborough. "Our success is the result of collaborative effort. And since the short time that I've been here, I have to tell you, people have been unbelievably great welcoming me here, meeting with me at any point in time, and I really feel that collaborative effort." The other thing I wanted to announce too, or just let people know, that the special ed pact had given me a wonderful reception, and I felt very welcomed, and it's just been a really great experience in the very short time I've been here. It's only been like three and a half months.
It doesn't stay that way, it's just a honeymoon period.
Usually the honeymoon is over the first month, and so far, so far, I'm still in a honeymoon period, I guess you're right.
You've done a lot in a short period of time.
Well, it's, believe me, a lot of that work had started already, and again, it was very collaborative. The elementary principals and Suzanne and everyone I've talked with have been really so easy to work with.
I'm glad you said that, though. It is a lot of work in a short period of time, because when, when we talked in the fall, and then she was ready to come on board, that is the, the one thing I said, is that we have these two programs we're not sure of. We have a program we don't have yet, wondering if we need one, based on this new population, and this other program, we're not sure if we're providing services in the optimal way. And that was actually, these, this is the most important thing, is looking at these two programs and helping us figure it out. And the time that, that Sandra and the principals and the special educators and sizzer put into really studying that issue and doing what's best for kids is, is huge. They've spent a lot of time. And I think that's why, I think when you go to meet with families, it's certainly clear that they've been very thoughtful about not only the programmatic needs of all of our children, but the individual needs of their child, and how we believe the shift is, is going to be good for their child, because we don't just say, "These are the programs we offer, try to fit in." We really, and this, this new program is a great example of a new population kind of coming to our attention, and us saying, is what we're doing good enough? You know, or could we be doing this better? And I think it will certainly prove to be the right thing for those students. And, and she's done a lot of work a few months on that. Just changes.
I enjoy it, yeah. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love the pace at which she presented as well. Nice writing that, write to it. Great job, Sandra.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Bye County Collaborative Quarterly Update.
Yes, so as you know from a few months ago, there's a new regulation in the state regarding special education collaboratives, that each member school committee will be provided with a quarterly update on the business of the collaborative. So you've had one already, this is your second, and this update, I'll just highlight a few things without, without reading, that the enrollment at the Bye County Collaborative School Programs is slightly down from last year, from 190 to 183. And if you look at the second bullet, the survey they conducted of all the member districts showed that 90% of the respondents said that school districts, for the most part, consider Byco when a student requires more restrictive programming that we don't offer or can't offer in some way. And I think that's certainly true of Foxborough. We don't send that many kids to Byco, but they have pretty vibrant programs that are available if we need them, and we can't provide it here. They have, as school districts do, they apply for various grants. One of the things I'd like to highlight, because it's such a big thing now in special education, is that they are going to be working across the collaborative, which will be a great benefit to us as a member, on transition planning for students age 14 and older. So that's a new part of the special education regulations, that the school districts must start planning for their transition beyond high school pretty early on, certainly by freshman year. And they're using grant funds to develop a collaborative-wide resource guide and appropriate assessment materials in the area of transition for students with disabilities. And that's probably the largest growing area in special education. Joe?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Joe.
So I was wondering, so would it start in eighth grade, like, say, if the student was 14? Transition planning?
I think that's a question for Dr. Einzel.
Yes.
For, at age 14. So it starts at age 14, or it goes by the age, not the grade?
Oh, what if you were in like seventh grade? And I have another question about, you know, the one to five-year period goals on the IEP, like, say, get a long-term appoint, parents, your parent would like you to get a long-term employment after high school?
Yes.
Like, like, say, would that start, so you put that in at the age of 13, so those goals start at the age of 14, right?
Yes.
What if you just turn 13, then you're going to be 14 at your next annual review?
Dr. Einzel?
Right. I think that, Joe, I think one of those things, that's discussed at the team meeting.
Oh.
So as they meet, and as students coming up to their 14th year, they do have that kind of discussion and start developing goals then.
Okay, like, I was asking this because some seventh graders are 14 at the end of the year, that's why, if transitioning would start in seventh grade if they're 14?
Yes, that's an important question.
Good thinking.
And it helps the district and the parents understand how they're going to work together to provide a successful future for each child.
Or like, say if you weren't going to go to the high school until the year after, would transition start in seventh grade?
It starts at age 14.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So that will be really helpful, and that, that really is an important topic for families and for students, and has been really highlighted. And then last, in addition to some of the other information, that Byco is looking into being a host training site for member districts, such as ourselves, for the sheltered English immersion endorsement. And this, there's a lot of DESE lingo in this Cohort Three, we're Cohort Two, not that it really matters, but basically, most, the vast majority of teachers are relicensing this year, so they're recertifying this year. Between now and five years from now, when they undergo relicensure again, there's, there are new regulations around licensure, where teachers have to have that sheltered English immersion endorsement, where they are prepared fully to teach second language learners in their classroom regardless of what they teach. So it's been, Amy will tell you, a little bit of a challenge, because they'll tell us which teachers and how many teachers have to undergo the training, this is the first year. And if Byco could host those trainings in the future, which has been discussed at our Byco board meetings with the superintendents, that would be great for us, because right now, they're, they're kind of scattered. So this would be, you know, a local, known location that our teachers could go and undergo that training. So that's an example of the services that a special education collaborative can provide that one might think is outside the world of special education, but important to the member districts in terms of other services they can offer us. So we're very happy that they're moving in that direction to see if they can become a training site.
Great.
Okay. Thank you for those highlights. Any other comments?
See you next quarter.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. So we're going to go on to school committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual.
Oh, we don't have anything in your packet, because I think, Ms. Lord, as one of the most active members in MASCE, maybe you could tell us why we vote the annual policy manual every year?
It is to ensure the fact that anybody appointed to the committee has, has gone over the policies. If they are in, still in fine standing, don't need any revision, and fortunately, we have the help of MAS, when something new or an update has to, you know, is on the horizon, they flag us, and that's why we occasionally have our subcommittee meetings, and then we bring all that forward to you. And there are no further updates recently that either Tina or I have been made aware of.
Which is why the policy subcommittee is one of the, I'll just say, at most active subcommittees, and it's, it's, it's constantly in effect, so it's, I don't want to say longstanding, I mean constantly standing, as a, as a policy subcommittee.
Because we don't know when there might be a revision to an existing policy, or when there might be a new policy that has to be incorporated.
And thank heavens, MAS is very helpful in signaling us when we need to pay attention to something.
When was the last time we had a change required?
We had some changes last May. We had a few changes related to gender identity in the law that went throughout the policy manual, but we haven't received any, any notification of any need for any update at this time.
And if there are any, I would say, smaller suggestions that come out of the self-assessment for the coordinate work review, then Amy and/or Sandra will be bringing those to the policy subcommittee, which they may be, you know, as they're getting toward the May 5th. I know they're saying April vacation, but, you know, wishes, hopes, and dreams sometimes.
It's actually May 15th.
May 15th.
We told ourselves, May 5th.
So I know Amy and I had a conversation about, about some of those, so if, if she feels that there is something through self-assessment she wants to bring to the attention of the subcommittee, then she would meet with them, and then it would be brought to this board. But as of tonight, there isn't anything.
So, yeah, we need to approve the policy manual. We do that annually, yes.
And in essence, the only thing that's changed is that gender definition throughout.
Well, we voted on that last May.
Right.
But, yeah.
Oh, really? But in effect, what we're voting on now is just the update with that in it.
Exactly. As it stands.
Thank you.
So we need a motion?
Yes, so last year, the, the motion was that, motion to approve the policy manual in its entirety, approve the Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual in its entirety. And I, I say that to, to try to explain that the annual, the fact that you annually vote it means it's never far from your radar. I think that's the point of going through this exercise every year, that it's an opportunity for the committee to say, wait a minute, is there a policy we wanted to revisit that maybe we forgot about, or that we talked about and then we didn't? So it's, it, I think that's why this annual vote is important, so that the policy manual doesn't just become something that...
Just a reminder, the other significant change we made last year was the cameras. We had a lengthy discussion about that, just, just as a refresher.
There were several.
Thank you, thank you.
So occasionally, we have an issue come up like that, that requires revision, and we have, you know, public input sometimes from, we have people who are concerned about particular policies, but that was the other significant change. I think we made one to the transportation policy as well, but those were the three.
And then the other thing is, every time there's a new updated athletic concern, that has been brought in, our, our policy manual reflects.
I think you've had changes in life-pertaining allergies, that policy within the last few years.
Concussions.
Concussions. So as things come up, it comes to the attention of the policy subcommittee and the committee, but I think that's, that's why you voted annually, so that it doesn't get dropped, and so that it's an opportunity to say, was there anything that we wanted to address?
I mean, we've had discussions on DEAF regulators, I mean, as that we become aware of them, we bring them forward.
All right, so do we have someone to make that motion? Foxborough School Committee to, votes to approve the Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? Five-zero. Policy approved. All right, we're going to go on to school committee vote on school choice participation. We do that annually as well.
Yeah, this is an annual opportunity to discuss. School choice, as you know, involves each school district deciding whether they want to invite students from, who are not residents of Foxborough, to come to the schools for a fee. When you open up school choice, you open up everything, you do have a right to decide if you want to bring in students from other area communities. The area communities around us, contiguous to us, do not participate in school choice. So we bring it up every year. This committee's never voted on, you know, to approve school choice, but we bring it up every year. If you want more discussion, we can not vote, you can not vote tonight, we can bring it back another meeting. So, but this is an annual, this is by law, this must be voted by the committee to not participate, otherwise you're subject to the procedures for participating in school choice.
Okay, so then we would need a motion.
To not participate.
The motion from last year stated, Foxborough Public Schools will not participate in school choice for the 2014-15 score.
Well, would, man, would it be a problem if, I, is it in my, our packet at all? I didn't see it, if it is my deepest apologies?
No.
But I don't have any, any information on which to vote. Would it be a problem if we waited till the next meeting to vote on it? Just so I could read up on it?
It's a policy.
It's in the law.
It's in the policy.
It's several pages of the, it's in the policy manual, and there's several pages in the law.
I, I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be obstructing anything, but I just, I'm just not versed on this matter to vote, so I could either abstain or, or request that we wait one more meeting.
Is there any more information that, that you could provide, Debbie, this evening about that?
Sure, there's about four pages of the law regarding if you do school choice, what you must comply with, and at the end it says, if you don't want to, then you must vote annually. So Janet can certainly send that to Steve tomorrow, or the whole committee if you want to.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to hold the board up. I'm just, I don't have, I didn't do my homework, or I don't know what the assignment was, I'm sorry.
You don't, you don't have the history of the discussion on this prior.
Right, right. No, that makes sense.
Just to clarify, none of the other area towns, so there wouldn't be any reciprocity, if we did invite other students to come to Foxborough for a fee, our students couldn't choose to go other places either.
You can only choose to go to a district that is...
That opts in.
That has opted to participate.
Right, that's why we have to make that choice in terms of whether we want to participate or not, or otherwise, if we decided to participate, then other districts could then...
Yes.
Other students from other districts could then come to our district, which would obviously have huge, you know, implications in terms of cost and, and revenue for, right?
Yes, because you, what, what you're allowed to charge in school choice is not necessarily how much it might cost you, but it's, you know, I'm, I'm going to say it is, for some districts who need it, is a revenue source. It, it typically is used if you're a school district that may be nearby another district where that you think you would have clients, potential clients, but it's never been something in this, that Foxborough's participated in. But it's certainly up to you, we can post...
Well, I'm comfortable...
Do you need that decision by a specific timeframe? If you delay till the next meeting, has that caused you any...
Is it?
I believe it's June 1st.
It's June 1st, right.
In the binder, I do believe it's June 1st.
Well, we need to be certain of that.
Oh, wow, I have it right here, I can actually give it to you. It's, so this is the school choice law, it's chapter 76, section 12B, and this is all the school choice information. So let me get to the part I had highlighted. Thanks for reminding me, I put it in my packet so I could see it. Okay. It's June 1st, so I certainly don't mind waiting it, waiting till the next meeting, and we'll just PDF this whole thing to you and send it to you.
I'd be grateful, thank you.
Sure.
If the board is fine with that, otherwise.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I actually thought of putting this in, but then we looked back at last year's packet to see if there was a handout in the packet, and there was not. So I basically mimicked what we had done the last several years, which is not to put anything in the packet, like the law, but just have the discussion, but I...
It's my own darn fault, I saw it there, and I, and I didn't call in to, to look into it.
Why don't we include the policy too, from, right?
I'm sorry.
Our policy?
Is there a...
We do, there is a policy.
There is a policy, in fact, we just approved the manual with it in it, but, yeah.
Why don't we just, why don't we, why don't we include the policy for...
Stating that we've opted out.
Details.
Yeah, for Steve, so he has that. But when is our next meeting?
It's the Monday right after our school vacation week. So that, we'll put it on the next meeting.
Is it April?
Yes.
Then it's the last meeting, right before the town elections, I believe. Okay, so let's make sure we get that in there.
That's fine.
Okay.
Makes total sense to me.
All right, let's move on to budget update then. Bill?
Since the last budget update, there's about an $8,000 difference in the projected surplus. Again, you know, all the way through the year, the salary accounts tend to move up and down, depending on what we get for maternity leaves or leaves of absence for some other reason. Obviously, when someone does leave, in that cases, we're bringing in substitutes, which are at different level price-wise. So you, you continue, we get a change there. The expense side, you know, we're kind of like in a little lull right now. The only real change from last time on the update to this time is that the, the gas utility side of things has actually increased a little bit worse than what we had thought. And when we look back at this, this has really been a very unusual year from the heating side of things. I'm sure most residents know that themselves, but, you know, we do so many monitings on on all of our utilities, so that when we go through this, we can actually see it based on degree days and, and what's, what's forcing us. Ironically, with all the energy efficiency stuff we've been putting into the different schools, the, the electric bills are actually dropping. So we're about 17,000 to the, to the benefit on the electric side, but yet we're about 44,000 off on the gas side. And again, the more you're running the, the boilers, obviously, the more you're, you're pushing out there, so that's actually up by about 7,000 from where it was last budget update. But shy of that, all the other expenses have stayed pretty well in place. You know, the, the few updates we had last time, as far as the generator costs and stuff like that, are, are still consistent, and those bills have been paid, so we're in good shape there. So I, I think we're, we're okay right now. My anticipation is we'll have, you know, one more update, obviously, before the end of the year, and then we can discuss some of the special needs we might have within the district before we, we close the year.
Bill, you just mentioned the generators, and that recent power outage, I think, demonstrates the value of those generators.
Actually, it was a great test for the, the brand-new one. It literally had been put online about two weeks before that, and the, it was kinda funny, because when we lost the power on South Street, obviously, the Taylor lost power, the IGO lost power, and so did the, the high school. And what was really interesting is, the way we lost power, not to get technical, but it's a three-phase system, one phase went down, and typically, that's the worst thing to ever have happen, 'cause that's how you blow out your freezer units and, and, you know, your heavy equipment, 'cause they run on three phases. What happened at the Taylor, because of the way we designed that system, the entire building is on this new generator, it dropped the entire building down and put it on the generator. I walked in a few seconds after the, the thing had happened, and, and the teacher goes, oh, yeah, yeah, we only lost power for a few seconds, they didn't realize the generator was running the entire building and keeping it going. So that worked out well, and, and we did survive through the, both the IGO and the, the high school as well, with the generators running to, to get there, but it's not quite the same as what the Taylor has at this point, tonight's setup, so it worked well.
The proof is in the pudding.
Yep. Ironically, though, and as I said to, to Deb and Amy, the problem would have been, because that was an extended period of timeout, we literally lost power at 11 o'clock, we didn't get back till 2 o'clock in the afternoon, we would have literally had to send the Taylor kids home.
It wasn't a warm day.
Yeah, well, it wasn't a warm day, but we had, would have had no life safety devices working in that building at all. So if it wasn't for that generator, it would have been the only building that we would have had to evacuate.
Wow.
And, and so with, with that, you know, expenditure, you basically got something very quickly out of it.
It was a great moment for us to appreciate the support we had to get the generator for the fifth school.
Yeah.
Plain and simple, so thank you.
Yeah.
So other than that, I, I don't have anything else, unless there's any other questions on it.
Motion to approve the budget statement.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Nice, nice to see there. All right, boy, we're going to other matters. Does anyone have anything under other matters? Well, I know Ms. Spinelli does.
Does anyone? I'll go last, how about that?
Well, no, you can go first.
I think you go first, you might be the only one.
I have a couple things, but I'll let Debbie go first, if she wants to.
I'll start with a couple, I, I have three appreciation things, if I may. The first, I put it in informational matters, an article that I had read in Edweek, and then Bruce called to my attention, and because of my conversation with Bruce, I decided to put it in the packet. And it was from Education Week, study, a study examines how school boards contribute to beat the odds districts. And it was a study and a report produced by Fordham Institute, a Washington-based educational research and advocacy group. And really, the things that came out of it that I thought was worthy of including is that while some school boards, it said, had a lot of information about their district, they didn't know which goals to prioritize, and it made me, number one, appreciate that annual exercise we go through in July at our retreat, where this school board participates actively in the priority goals for the district. That's been really helpful in guiding our direction. And then, even more importantly, it says, and I quote, "According to the study, the most successful districts were those whose board members focused efforts on improving student learning. Those districts were found more likely to exceed academic expectations, given their demographics and finances." And so that's point number two, and I, I do sincerely appreciate that that is exactly what this school committee, this school board does. So that was number one, and I thought, I have to put that in the packet. Number two, last, within the last few weeks, I was at the Senior Center for a coffee and conversation with the superintendent, and I had a, a great meeting with some very wise senior citizens who have so much to offer, and we had a great conversation about some things they were wondering about. And I went there with this flyer that you see, invitation to senior citizen visiting days in the Foxborough Public Schools, and they are signing up at the Senior Center, and so I just wanted to announce to the public, so if you don't know about this yet, call the Senior Center if you want to go. At Foxborough High School next week, Tuesday, April 15th, from 7:45 in the morning to 9:45 for the early birds, you're gonna spend some time in the music wing, in the orchestra, band, and chamber singers, in the music suite, where they are instructed to see how their day goes that first period, and what they're actually doing to see how the students learn, rather than just be at a formal performance. And then they're going to tour what I call some of the gems of the high school that is hidden from the public, you know, we come in the front door, we go to the auditorium, we take a left, we come to the media center, we may go to the cafeteria, as we did this evening. But some of the hidden gems is way in the back, the art wing, the technical education classrooms, the CAD lab, for example, and the woodworking shop. So we're gonna go look at those hidden gems of Foxborough High School, and we're gonna have a nice light brunch.
I like that, hidden gems.
And then, in June, at the Ahern Middle School, on June 18th, from 10:00 AM to noon, for those people who like the middle of the day, or both, you can go to both, the Ahern Middle School Band Course and Orchestra are going to perform for the seniors, and then we'll have a light lunch. And if the seniors wanna stay, we have eighth-grade students doing, give back to community, Community Service Day that day, and they're going to take our seniors on a tour of the school, if they like one. Anywhere they wanna go, toured by students, nothing better than that. And then my third-
Can I just make one comment? I love this. I just thought this was a wonderful idea, and, I mean, it gives seniors a chance to see what we're doing in the schools, actually see it during a school day.
And have a purpose for visiting, and during the day, where, because there's nothing like engaging with the students when they're in school, because they're so lively, and I, and, and that's, that'll be a lot of fun. And I have to say, during my coffee and conversation with them, and I have another one at the end of April, they had a great, one of his, one of the guests at that meeting, Nancy, you know, had this unbelievable idea, when I talked about this, she had moved here from another state, and, you know, a few years ago, and she said, she gave me an idea that I love so much, that that's what we're going to do next year. And she said it was called Bus to the Future, and they boarded a school bus, and they were taking all the schools in the district, so they could see the future, the kids are the future. And I thought, what a great idea to combine that idea with technology. So as they stop in the five schools, they see different technologies going into the future, so they gave me the idea for next year already. So we're having Bus to the Future next year.
That's awesome.
And then, last but not least, we hosted our first-ever Foxborough Clergy Association Breakfast. We had a clergy breakfast, the principals and I met with our local clergy, we had six members of the clergy attend, I would love to thank them for coming, Pastor Justin Campbell from River Community Church, Pastor Andy Gaffers from the Church of Emmanuel, Pastor Bill Dudley from the Union Church of South Foxborough, Pastor Derek White from Bethany Congregational Church, Pastor Robert Zagara from Seventh-day Adventist Church, and Father Steve Madden from St. Mary's, and actually Pastor Richter from the Church of Emmanuel was ill, but he had planned to attend as well. We had a great conversation about the youth in town, and what we have in common and interests in serving those youth, and, and ways that they could partner with the schools as a member of the community, and, and, and it was really a great start, and so we're going to continue that, at least, you know, annually, we'd like to have an annual event where we keep up the conversation about what's happening with the youth in the town, and how do we all work together. So it was, it was really, I appreciate their coming, and I think we're off to a good start.
Great.
That's great.
So this was the first year, then?
The first time ever.
Okay, awesome, thank you, Debbie. And that's great work you're doing.
So, thank you.
Happy people. I love how you're engaging the community in so many different ways, it's just, it just can only benefit our students and the district, so thank you.
Pretty good ideas.
Well, that will be easy to evaluate, comes time.
Anybody have anything else?
I just have a couple of things, there's a lot of stuff that's been going on in the last couple weeks, and, you know, Debbie and I attended the Foxborough Interact Club's Family Fun Night Benefit for Rosie's Rafiki's on March 28th, over at the Borough School. The Interact Club is the youth branch of the Rotary Club here in town, and they do one local community service project and one international project. This was their international project, but it had a great local tie-in, because Rosie's Rafiki's, I don't wanna misstate it, it's, it's, it was started in memory of Rose Schatz, who was killed a few years ago in an automobile accident, was a student at the Borough School at the time, and most of the students in the Interact Club are, were, are now in high school, and they're junior high school, they're friends of hers. So for their international project, Rosie's Rafiki's sponsors students who go to school in Kenya, scholarships for them, and other things, but they wanted to raise money for the international project, and they did it at the Borough School. It was a great night, it was very well-attended, and kudos to the kids who did this, they raised $1,600, and then the Rotary Club donated a matching donation of $1,000, so that will be the tuition to send a student to school for an entire year in Kenya, which is-
Isn't that wonderful? And actually, Rosie's mom, Joanie Block, is down in the cafeteria at the African Culture booth.
I saw her there.
Right, and she just told me tonight that, the beginnings of that, there are still contributions coming in.
That's fabulous. It was a great night.
And the word Rafiki in Swahili means friend, so that's why it's Rosie's Rafiki's.
So it's a great group of kids and a great organization. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, to congratulate all of the music students, I think we had over 500 of them who participated in the MICA Festival this past weekend, and I, I think all of our bands had great success, I, I wrote it down. MICA stands for the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, and the fifth-grade band took a bronze, the sixth-grade band had a silver medal, the seventh and eighth-grade band got a gold medal, the seventh and eighth-grade orchestra had a bronze medal, the high school orchestra had a gold, the high school band had a gold, and then the combined choirs had a silver medal, and the chamber singers, singers took a gold medal. So that's just phenomenal, and all of our, Mr. Massey and his entire team deserve, you know, huge honors for that.
I'll put that in your packet next time, Mr. Massey, you just sent that to me today.
That was fabulous.
With the list of the awards, and it's always nice to be able to look at that in print, so I'll put that in the next packet.
And the instructors who evaluated them were from all over the country and did just a phenomenal critique, and the kids learned so much, so it's a great thing.